Why the fence, the other pages weren't, there were three sheets.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for everybody for coming. This meeting has been set up to appreciate Baker Tilly coming and we're gonna do a kind of an initial review, I guess, of Form 1 budgets and any questions. I mean, this is very helpful to the council and to the clerk treasurer. The mayor can't be here tonight because he had a family emergency, but we're starting early this year. Last year, we got a late start on budgets, so this is very helpful.
We got a nice fancy mic so everybody can hear us. Is there any way that we could get the projection to be the main screen? All right, I see some familiar faces. I met with some of you a couple of weeks ago to go over some capital planning, but my name's Nicole Grzbowski. I'm with Baker Tilly. I'm a senior consultant. I am accompanied by Amber, who is the manager over Peru. And we're here to just kind of educate, just give a little overview of the budget process, give you insights to all of the inter workings that go into getting a budget submitted to the DLGF and essentially everything that Andrea has to tackle in order for budgets to be approved. And yeah, that's what we're gonna get going with our presentation here. So we'll go over a few different objectives. First, we're just gonna review basic concepts of the local government budgeting, the budget process, best strategies and practices to prepare the budget, specifically preparing spending plans, which is the Form 1s that you have been, that you've received from Andrea and possibly started working on already, and then also the legislative considerations that should be considered when preparing these budgets going forward. So starting off with the basic concepts of local government budgeting. There are multiple purposes for the budget process. Obviously, the main one, it's required by every political subdivision and taxing district in the state. It requires state approval to spend the money and also to levy those property taxes. It is considered a financial plan to allocate resources and accomplish objectives, which I know the city council and the mayor have plenty of objectives that they want to see accomplished during their term, and this is a great way to kick off that, those objectives from getting completed. And it also communicates goals and priorities to the taxpayers through elected leadership. So council meetings, just educating the public on what these monies are being spent on. There are two different state agencies that are heavily involved in local governments, and that is the Department of Local Government Finance, or DLGF. This is the agency that ultimately approves the budget. And then there's State Board of Accounts, which is the agency that is primarily over financial reporting, which I'm sure Andrea has dealt with both so far. The main piece of revenue for the city is property taxes. And that involves a couple of different pieces. So there is your net assessed value, which creates your tax base, which is your net value after deductions and abatements of real and personal property. And then that turns into your property tax levy, which is money generated by applying that tax, the tax rate to each $100 of your net assessed value. Each year, the DLGF sets a maximum percentage that your property tax levy can grow to. The last couple of years, this has been maxed out at 4%. If they hadn't set a cap at it, it probably holistically would be around, what, over 5%. So they are limiting you by a little bit over 1%. The highest that it has ever been set at was 2023 at 5%. I don't, I wish we could, I wish we had a crystal ball to see what the future years would look like. The initial SB 1 bill did project out to 2028 on maxing these rates to 2%, so we are happy to see that that was switched to 4% for 2026. But that just goes to show how fast things change from the start of a bill being prepared to the end of the bill being passed. There are other things that don't contribute to the maximum property tax levy, including population, property values, development, and local expenditures. And unlike popular belief, budget appropriations do not determine the maximum levy limitation. In fact, it's quite opposite. You get your maximum levy limitation, and then you try to fit your budget into that. So how does local government fund services? As mentioned previously, the main bucket of income for the city is property taxes. And then there are a couple of other taxes that are linked to that property tax, like motor vehicle and commercial vehicle excise and financial institution tax. And then there is a separate local income tax, which we'll dive into a little bit later. There are some other smaller tax and state distributions that are received by the city, including motor vehicle highway distributions, local road and street distributions, which those two are restricted to the MVH and local road and street funds, which are further restricted for use on paving. And then there's riverboat wagering tax, which has no restrictions, as well as cigarette and alcohol beverage tax. And the main receipts that the city receives that you do have control over are your local receipts, which is your license and permits, your charges for services, fines and fees, and then any interest income that is received in any investments or bank accounts that the city holds. Local income tax is tax that is based on adjusted gross income of the county, and that is the current local income tax. With the passing of SB 1, this has kind of changed. The future of local income tax is going to look quite different, but as of right now, this is how property, or this is how local income tax is set up. There is a property tax relief credit, which Peru, or the county of Miami currently has. There's an expenditure portion of the local income tax, which has a 2.5 max, and that's even further broken up into certified shares, public safety, economic development, all three of which Peru receives. And then there's some other county pieces that are involved in the expenditure, as well as a special purpose, which Miami County also has. Next is circuit breaker.
So, circuit breakers can be a pretty confusing topic, but at a high level, it is, it's basically, it came from legislation in 2008, and it's credits that are given back to taxpayers that essentially loses the city property tax revenue every year. So, as Nicole discussed, the MLGQ, or that 4% growth quotient, so every year, that is set by DLGF, and your max levy, which is what your tax rates are based on, grow by that. However, it is not exempt from circuit breaker. So, in 2008, legislation was passed that essentially says a, and if you want to go to the next slide, a residential taxpayer cannot pay more in their property tax bill than 1% of their assessed value. So you can kind of see the math here. It's 2% for like rental units and agricultural properties, and then 3% cap for commercial. But if you are a homeowner with, and your house is worth $100,000, which we all know the assessed value of our homes has been increasing, so that increases your cap. Let's say you've got a $100,000 home. Depending on the tax rates that are adopted by the city, the township, library, schools, so it's really a combination of that max levy spread out across all of those units' assessed values, which results in the tax rates. If those tax rates result in a tax bill to this homeowner that is more than $1,000, so let's say that amounts to $1,200, that is essentially what the county bills, but because of those credits, the county only collects $1,000, which is then returned to Peru. So that's $200 just for that taxpayer that is essentially lost revenue. So pre-2008, this wasn't an issue. In 2008, this obviously passed, and every community, every taxing unit in Indiana had to adapt to these new credits and this reduction in revenue. And honestly, this was 2008 Senate Bill 1, essentially. Senate Bill 1 is going to do the same thing, which we'll talk about at the end of this presentation, but reduce revenues to taxing units, essentially. So keep that in mind for anyone who was around in 2008, when this kind of all came to a head and the city had to kind of turn on its heels and adapt to this. We would expect the same kind of adaptation needed to address Senate Bill 1, but maybe with a little bit more impact, because things cost quite a bit more in 2025 than they did in 2008. So, you want to go to the next tab? So this is kind of, just kind of what I walked through. This is a sample tax bill for a homeowner in Peru, and I pulled this. If you go to Indiana's Transparency Portal online, which is called Gateway, you can go in there and estimate your tax bill for any, no matter where you live in Indiana, you can go ahead and do that. So I went in there and estimated if I lived in the city of Peru, and I also took the, from the census data, the median property value, which was about $84,000, but that was based on 20, I believe it was 2021 through 2023 numbers. So it could be a little bit higher now, but then I also showed a $200,000 homeowner as well. So you can kind of see if we focus on the $84,000, after all of your deductions, your net assessed value that you would be taxed on for your home would be about $22,500. Your tax bill with a, the city's current tax rate, which is 4.9418, should be just over $1,100, but based on that 1% cap, there is about almost a $300 shortfall, because your tax limit at 1% would be 840, which is 1% of the property value of $84,000. And so $840 is what you would pay in that. Almost $300 just for that taxpayer would, is essentially lost. Money that the city cannot budget for, but has to account for every year, because the city can't depend solely on that gross property tax that is levied. Next. So, basically how circuit breaker credits work is all of the units in the taxing districts. So, you know, we're all taxpayers here. You might live in the city of Peru, but you're also paying taxes to the schools, to a township, to the county, maybe to an airport. All of those, so if that, if the $84,000 example had $300 in circuit breaker losses, that $300 would be split amongst all of those units, depending on their percentage of the total tax rate in that district. So everyone in that taxpayers' district would be sharing in those circuit breaker credits. Next slide. And so this graph is very telling for Peru. I obviously didn't go back to 2008, but you can see all the way back to 2009. The yellow is the property tax that the city has actually collected, so can actually turn around and spend and budget for. The gray are, is the lost revenue due to circuit breaker credit. So if in 2008, that legislation was never passed, you know, 2025, for example, the city would have an extra $3.1 million to spend on its annual budget. But unfortunately, that legislation caps that. So, and that's annual, and unfortunately, it's, you know, unless the legislation change, it will be, continue on forever, so.
Amber, what was the big, for 2025, what was the big change? Can you say what was the big change that caused it to go down?
That is a good question. That number actually just came out. However, I believe the city, or not the city, the county changed the property tax replacement credit rate, which is a lit rate that Nicole had discussed. When you change that rate, because that is a rate that is added to the tax bill before circuit breaker, so when you change that rate, if you lower the rate, for example, you would lower that credit, but then what that would do, because circuit breaker is applied after, it would increase your circuit breaker amount. That's typically what we, why we see that happening. It could also be, for example, a overlapping unit changed their rate to where, you know, if they raised their tax rates to afford a new debt or something, because, you know, what the library does or the township does, does affect you all in that share of circuit breaker credit. It very well could have increased circuit breaker credit for that entire district. So, we'll need to go back, that number just came out earlier this week. We'll need to go back to kind of identify why that shot up, but yes, it did, it did increase quite a bit in 2025. And unfortunately, we'll talk about this in a little bit, but with the Senate Bill 1 changes, we would expect circuit breakers to keep increasing, unfortunately.
Now, I'm gonna take you back to my governmental accounting class that I took in college for a little bit, so try to stay awake. But I'm gonna hit on fund accounting. So, local governments are interesting, because there are different buckets and funds that these monies get deposited into. And this is a uniform set of accounts that is dictated by the State Board of Accounts, which we talked about earlier. This is a pretty extensive way of doing financial reporting, because there are a lot of restrictions and limitations to each fund that is involved. There is a system for recording these revenues and expenses, and you have to record separate revenues and expenses within each fund to make sure that all of the monies are being appropriated to each fund appropriately, which Andrea has the lovely job of doing as clerk treasurer. Most funds are limited to what purposes they can use these monies for as well, except for general, which will house majority of your revenues received in the city. But the major budget classifications that you'll see on your Form 1s are your personal services, your supplies, your other services and charges, debt service, and capital outlays. Each of these classifications are restricted for specific purposes within those classifications. And just an illustration based on the general fund, which is a pretty unrestricted fund. You have your fund type, which is general, your fund to name, which again is general, and then those five budget classifications that I talked about previously. And you'll notice that the only one that has additional categories within the classification is your other services and charges, and that's where you'll see professional services, utilities, and then any other items that don't fit within the other categories. This is important, because while you're setting up your Form 1s, authorization by legislative body to make these dispersments need to happen, and that's why there is an adoption by council to approve these budgets. Without the approval of council and the DLGF, essentially no dispersment can be made without that appropriate, or without that authorization. And the DLGF approval is required for all funds that receive property tax revenue. And another confusing topic is appropriations, and what if you don't spend all the appropriations? So let's say your department, your personal services budgeted $50,000 to spend in 2025, but you only end up spending $25,000. That means that you had $25,000 that you appropriated for, but you didn't actually spend. That doesn't mean that the $25,000 will go onto your budget for next year, and it doesn't mean that you lost that money. It just means that that money simply wasn't spent, so it went, so it goes down to your cash balance line. So essentially, you thought you were gonna spend $50,000, you actually only spent $25,000, which means your cash balance is more positive $25,000, because you didn't spend the full 50. So these appropriations expire at the end of every budget year. Now, say you come to October, and you realize that you spent $48,000 of your $50,000 in personal services. There are things called additional appropriations that require permission, essentially to be granted, to spend that money in excess of the budget that was originally passed. It requires a publication, so to notify the taxpayers of the public hearing, of which the adoption of the ordinance would happen. It requires adoption of the ordinance by council. But then there's also an input on Gateway that requires DLGF approval after council's approval to make sure that it is funded. If DLGF deems that it is not fundable, your claim may be denied, even though the council had approved the ordinance. There's also an option to encumber, which is essentially if you had made an appropriation in 2025, had incurred an obligation or a contract to spend that money, but that money wasn't going to be spent until 2026, that's when you can encumber it, which means you wouldn't add it on to your 2026 budget, it would just carry forward.
So the budget process. So, next slide. The budget cycle is basically rinse, recycle, repeat every single year. So by August of this year, for 2026 net assessed values, the county will set those property values and certify them. Next, between July and October, although we are in May, so you guys are starting way early, earlier than July, which is great, and we would recommend that always. You all are preparing your local budgets, and government units, every government unit is doing this around the state. The next step is, once those are submitted by the end of October to the DLGF, they will review and certify those budgets. So if they have to cut your budget, or make changes to your budget, or any, or anything in regards to your property tax rates, that would be their window of time to do that. And by January 15th, 2026, they will have to certify the city's budgets, property tax rates, and property tax levies for 2026. Those amounts are then moving on to the tax bills that are prepared by the county by April of 2026. And then, as we all know, tax payments are due in May and November of '26. And then basically, this cycle starts all over again every single year. So the local budget process, which is what you all are starting right now, and is really important, and as we start to navigate, you know, over the next several months, what Senate Bill 1 truly means to the city, it's really just a great idea to start this process earlier and earlier each year, so you can be very well-prepared for 2026. So Andrea gave you all your budget forms 1s, which is really the first thing on this item, is preparing an itemized estimate of those expenditures. The next few steps, and this looks different for every community in terms of, you know, how many meetings you're having, how many levels of review, et cetera. But really, you know, you're having those department head meetings with Andrea, town council, maybe, or city council, mayor, to review those budgets, and then, really, it rolls into a point when the city is comfortable with those budget, Andrea is putting them all into the Gateway Portal for DLGF review. That kind of steamrolls into those budgets are then advertised to taxpayers, and you have your public hearing and your adoption meeting to adopt those budgets. Next slide. And that kind of outlines this. These are statutory requirements, so you have to notify taxpayers 10 days before the budget public hearing. You hold the budget public hearing, which has to be 10 days before the adoption, and then all of the million forms that Andrea has to complete are submitted to the DLGF, and then council adopts that budget. Within, and then, within five business days, everything is uploaded to DLGF for review. Next slide. This timeline just goes a little bit further into detail of that, you know, it outlines when circuit breaker reports are available, which I just said was May. You know, when DLGF releases certain information, like that growth quotient, which we know what that is, you know, last day to hold the public hearing statutory is, for example, October 22nd each year. Deadline to adopt is by November 1st. But this just kind of goes into more detail of that timeline. So DLGF does review the budgets that I, as I had mentioned. The DLGF, though, is not a financial advisor, so they just review for accuracy, they, you know, adjust tax rates or budgets based on any statutory requirements. They issue the final review, which is a 1782 notice that is sent to the mayor and Andrea for final review, and then they issue that budget order, which is that deadline by January 15th each year, and that's how they prepare the tax bills.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
So, we're flying through this pretty quick. Will there be, like, this presentation, can we share that with the department heads and the council?
And while Nicole was talking, I did pull open the lit information for the question you asked. From '24 to '25, the county did decrease the property tax replacement credit. So like I had said, that is a credit that is applied to tax bills before circuit breaker. So when you decrease the amount of that credit, it sends more homeowners to their circuit breaker cap, so it increases circuit breakers. And we'll talk about this in a minute, but Senate Bill 1 does eliminate that altogether. So once that is eliminated, another increase in circuit breaker will.
Now, I know you all aren't really involved in the weeds of the timelines and everything, but just with how extensive it is, it's important for you to at least understand that a lot goes into this budget process. I know last year was kind of an anomaly with Andrea coming in a little bit later, and that's why we're jump-starting the budget process so quick. But as you can see, there are multiple steps to this process, and that's why even getting your Form 1 started, they may be tweaked for the next couple of months before adoption, but at least it started. So that's why this is a great thing, that it's happening mid-May, rather than having these conversations at the end of August like last year. So this was, this is just another summary of the budget development. Obviously, we are still working to determine the monetary impacts of SB 1, to determine what your accurate funding sources are. However, that shouldn't stop us from preparing the spending plans. Obviously, when we get closer to the adoption, closer to knowing hard numbers of what SB 1 is going to do to city revenues, then we'll backtrack and determine if anything needs to be looked at under a thicker microscope. But as of right now, we're at the gray spot where we're preparing these spending plans, which some of you may have done this from last year, but essentially, you're But essentially, your goal is going to be preparing sustainable expense budgets. Recurring operating costs should not exceed your annual estimated operating receipts, which, again, operating receipts won't change, but any SB 1 tied revenue will most likely change in 2026, except for the lit, which won't take into effect until 2028. You want to make sure that any increases in operating costs are sustainable in future years. Obviously, the budget is only one year forward-looking. However, this budget tied with the comprehensive plan that we prepare for the city really gives them a longer-term period to see what is sustainable and what really needs to be tweaked. This is the budget summary that we had from our final comprehensive financial report last year. All the numbers that are reflected on this page are essentially change in fund balance. So anything that is showing as red means that we would expect a cash decrease in that year. It doesn't mean that your fund balance at the end of the year is going to be negative. It just means that your cash is going to go down within that year. And for certain funds, like MVH restricted, we don't mind seeing that red number because MVH restricted is very much restricted, like in the title. But obviously, we don't like to see trends of the negative red. And this is what comes to a balanced budget. Once we get the finalized estimated revenues for each department, it'll help you have a better idea of what the cash impact will be based on your Form 1s, based on your initial Form 1s, and whether that number will be red or black. This is just a visual representation of how the report ended up last year. The green line is your city cash balances. The dotted blue line is 50% of the total operating and maintenance costs for those funds that were reflected on the previous page. This is the ideal balance that we would like to see the city keep or hire. And then, the dotted red line is 15% of the operating and maintenance costs, which essentially means that the city, if all revenues were to stop tomorrow, the city would still have two months of cash reserves to be able to operate without revenues coming in. Same for the 50%. You would have six months to operate without any revenues coming in. So based on the report last year, which was based on ending 2023, and the 2020, yeah, ending 2023, and the 2024 and 2025 budgets, the city's cash reserves were well above that 50% line. Best practices. So cash reserves should be used for non-recurring one-time expenses, and that is essentially your capital items. That is why, a couple weeks ago, we sat down with the majority of you to determine those plans and help identify any years that might have bigger, bigger costs. And that way, we can build up an annual allowance to get to that cost rather than having it hit so hard in that one, in that one year. You want to ensure that additional, any additions to reoccurring costs are sustainable in the long term, which is what I hit on previously, developing that long-term capital plan, which we're already in the works of. And avoiding inflated spending plans. Overbudgeting is great for purposes like avoiding additional appropriations. However, it doesn't give the state accurate numbers to see what monies you actually need to operate your local government. So, one of the main goals of your budget preparation is going to be submitting fully-funded budgets to the DLGF so that they don't have to come back and cut, which this is very easy to tell. In one of the forms that Andrea will have to fill out in Gateway, it'll show at the end of 2025 what your estimated cash flow will be. And if that is in the red, then they will cut your budget up to the point where it won't be in the red. And that stuff that we check prior to submission, so that should be avoided already. However, if we are going through your Form 1s and we notice anything that might be out of the ordinary, any larger inputs, we might just ask the question if there's a specific purpose for it, just so we know to prioritize certain items if they're needed. Do not ignore the potential of impact on circuit breaker tax caps, which Amber hit on previously. That is going to be affected in 2026. Unfortunately, we're still at a point where we don't know specifically how that's going to be affected, other than it will most likely be an increase in circuit breaker credits, which in turn is lost revenue for the city. Avoid applying that flat percentage increase to this year's budget. Really try to take a deep dive into your account-level detail of what you've used in the past three years and determine, was 2022 an outlier? Was $26,000 a non-recurring item? You really want to take a look and identify if there are any recurring versus non-recurring to set your budgets up appropriately. And the last bullet point, begin the process earlier rather than later, which, mid-May, I'd say this is, this is one that we can already cross off the list. Legislative considerations.
I will highlight one of Nicole's points she just made as I start talking about, kind of Senate Bill 1 a bit, about the avoid inflating or adding a cushion to your proposed spending plan that you provide to Andrea. Because as, as the city begins to navigate the changes, which in many cases will be reduced revenues of citywide, the data that the mayor and Andrea and council needs to be able to look as far out as 2030 to plan for that cannot really have that cushion or that, those inflated budgets in it, because it's just not easy data, especially right now. You know, we really need to project out and look into the future of what will, what will each department actually spend. Now, that's not to say, you know, you submit a budget to Andrea with no cushion or added inflation, that, you know, if a need comes up in '26 and you need to return to council to ask for that additional appropriation that Nicole, that's not to say that won't happen, but it'll be really important to kind of really dive into those budgets now for each department and provide a very precise 2026 budget, just so everyone can plan as we will start to see these impacts of Senate Bill 1 starting next year. So hopefully, you all are at least a little bit in the loop of Senate Bill 1. And I've said this a couple times, essentially, in many cases, these changes will change the revenue structure and the revenue that the city brings in. So this is just a very high-level table of all of those changes that Senate Bill 1 implemented. The first two are essentially phasing out the current property tax deductions and phasing in a new property tax deduction that's quite a bit higher for residents, as well as a new credit that's about, it's like lesser of $300 or 10% of their property tax bill. But what those three items, as well as the deductions for 2% properties, which are your rental incomes, your agriculture, those will be phased up for over six years, as well as your business personal property taxes changing, where they are essentially increasing that exemption amount after 2026. Those first five items, in a nutshell, and we're working through kind of a huge statewide database to be able to come up with and say those five items will result in X amount of lost revenues for Peru. But we're a few months away from having those numbers because it's a huge undertaking project. But essentially, what we're initial coming up with is those five items will slow the city's assessed value growth, which will in turn raise tax rates because assessed value and tax rates are inversely related. So a high assessed value keeps tax rates low, whereas a low assessed value raises your tax rate. So with a lower assessed value growth, it will raise tax rates. And when you raise your tax rates, you start to raise those circuit breaker credits because more people are hitting that tax cap quickly, more quickly with those raised rates. So those phases begin next year, but they are phased in over six years. So next year, the city might begin to see minimal impacts of that, but by 2031, the city will be in those full impacts. So, as Nicole had mentioned, we do look at a five-year plan for the city. So really, starting with those very precise 2026 spending budgets, so we can provide the city an accurate path forward over the next six years of how it will navigate these changes in revenues is very crucial. Then there's a couple items, some changes to TIF, which mayor may not, the city mayor may not see a huge, well, the TIF here, never mind, the TIF here is county-wide. But there are some loopholes in the TIF that we were internally just discussing, where the DLGF can use some of their own tools to help avoid any TIF impacts, but that's another kind of project we're working on right now. And of course, we'll do that with the county. But a couple other items, you know, debt. So last year, the city did issue debt for a capital project. There is now a one-year cooling-off period, so many communities across the state issue debt for those projects every year that affect tax rates. You can no longer do that. Again, like Nicole had mentioned, the tax levy, it does cap the growth levy at 4% again in 2026. Who knows what they will do in years beyond? But there will likely be a pretty major change regarding that of how the calculation is even come up with to basically avoid those 5% growth quotients that we were seeing once, once before. It also eliminated the, what was called the excess levy three-year growth appeal. So if you were a very fast-growing community, meaning your assessed value was growing faster than the state, through this year, you'll be able to apply for that appeal. Typically, we help our clients check for eligibility and then file the appeal every single year when we help Andrea with the budget. I don't believe the city has been eligible in the past few years, but after this year, that appeal will be gone altogether. So, you know, you think of your very fast-growing communities, maybe your Carmels, your communities in Lake County who, you know, have the influx of Illinois residents. They often get that appeal because the method originally behind that appeal was, we're growing faster than the state, we need more property tax dollars to provide public safety services, you know, things like that. That will no longer be eligible for communities. And then, the big one, which I'll talk here on the next slide, is a complete overhaul of the local income tax structure, which will change for everyone and cause some major revenue changes for every taxing unit. And then, for new fire territories after the end of 2024, their property tax rates are capped at 0.4%. I believe Peru's fire territory rate for '25 is over that. I believe it was 0.46. Luckily, you guys are grandfathered in. To avoid that cap, unless you ever decided to dissolve and create a newer, larger fire territory, you would be subject to that property tax cap. Yes?
I've got a quick question for either one of you. You know, we just, a lot of the homeowners just got, you know, their assessed value on their homes, first part of this month for next year. We're seeing it going up 33%, 35%, I mean, just crazy. And of course, that's all done at the...
County level.
At the county level. I'm sure there's, with some state, for some reason, you know, that they went up. I haven't met with the assessor yet. I will, as a lot of homeowners will, but I don't know what they're going to tell me. I'm sure they're going to say, well, state had certain, you know, made certain adjustments. The impact, I don't, I don't know what they're going to tell me, but what do you know about why assessed values have gone up so this year in terms of...
Do you want to say something?
I could answer Tim's question to a point. When I was up paying my property taxes the other day, I stepped around the corner to the assessor's office and said, how did you arrive at this 32%, 33% increase in the value of my home? I mean, I wish it were the case, but it was a very significant increase, which obviously is going to result, no doubt, in a much higher tax bill. The answer I got was...
What is the answer?
Oh.
A cold stare. She said, I don't know. They said, they sent us the tables, and this is what, how it comes out. We don't know how they arrived at the numbers and anything else like that. Maybe they spent too much time downtown.
Yeah, I don't know that I have a good answer. I think, I'm guessing everyone probably in this room has seen their home assessed value increase, no matter what county you live in. Mine certainly has up in St. Joe County. I think a lot of the reasoning behind Senate Bill 1 and to increase these deductions was to lower the assessed value, the base for those property tax bills. So, you know, a lot of this language is to protect the homeowners for those reasonings. While, you know, they might not see that in '25, and it, it might not change the process that the assessor's office is using to set those values. It will certainly change with this phase in of new and higher deductions, what that base for that tax bill then is, which is good for homeowners. It's not good when, because it would likely result in a lower bill, but it's not good for taxing units when circuit breakers increase and budgets are having to be managed due to that, or changed, or cut, or, you know, worst-case cut.
Is Baker Tilly seeing these kinds of increases in assessed values across other areas that you...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. And I think a lot of it is, you know, tied to the 2020, '21 housing boom and, you know, these, I don't know what goes on in the assessor's office day-to-day and how they do their job. Unfortunately, I personally don't work closely with assessors. But it is a trend, and it happened not long after that 2020, 2021 housing boom.
Because, you know, we've seen it go up 3%, 4%, and then all of a sudden, bam, 30-plus percent.
Yeah.
So I just wasn't sure, you know, like...
Well, I think, Tim, one of the things that I find confusing about it, was, when was it, back in the 2000s, when allegedly we were going to market values to get values of homes and stuff? Somebody's just playing games with the market value. Market values did not change by 32%. Of course, you're not even in Marion County on North Meridian.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I, I think that's the frustration, maybe.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure they have some sort of database, you know, that they are basing their analysis off of. And my gut would say that database, the data's probably skewed if they are using market data from the market data that we've seen, you know, what house prices in the past, or past few years. So it's, I don't know. It's probably triggering higher assessed values and just continuing to do so.
I'm not trying to put you guys on the spot. I'm just trying to see what you've seen out there.
Yeah.
Is this common across, you know, the other communities that you're involved in?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So did want to focus on local income tax and the change there. So the current local income tax structure, as the city knows it, will go away in 2028. And do you know how, what's the total local income tax? Let me pull it open, just to give you an idea of how much local income tax the city is currently receiving. of how much local income tax the city is currently receiving. So in 2025, the city is receiving just over $6 million of local income tax. About 1.7 million of that goes to the general fund, which is unrestricted, the certified shares that Nicole covered. One point, almost 1.2 million is public safety. So that's restricted to fire and police. And then about 3 million of that is economic development, which is also unrestricted and often used for like projects, things of that nature. So in 2028, that 6 million, the structure will go away. That, it will go away on its own unless the city takes action. Because if you see here, the only opportunity for Peru as a city to generate local income tax will be the last column. Municipalities over 3,500 will have to adopt their own local income tax rate. And that max rate is 1.2%. So right now, how lit is, as Nicole said, how lit is structured? The county adopts the lit rate in total. With the current buckets, your public safety lit, your economic development. And then the county distributes lit to all of the units within the county. So they're sending the lit checks to Peru, to the library, to the township. They're just cutting them all a check based on, well, Peru is this much assessed value of the total county. So let's say that amounts to 20%. Then Peru's getting 20% of lit. That's how it currently works. That will all go away. And every year, once annually, city council will have to adopt a local income tax rate in order to replace, hopefully, at least a portion of that revenue. So all of those buckets will go away, like the public safety lit, that will go away. The economic development will go away. And any lit that the city adopts will all go into the general fund. So that will affect budgets in 2028. Because if police and fire are currently being, all or a portion, well, you have the fire territory. But if police, for example, is mostly being funded on public safety lid or whatever that is used for, those budgets will have to flow within the general fund. And a lot of changes will be forthcoming for council, Andrea, and the mayor to kind of reorganize, I guess, if you will, what those budgets look like. The rest of the buckets up here are, the first three are adopted by the county. So the first one is 1.2% just for the county. The second one, again, adopted by the county. But that is a max of 0.4% that the county could, could choose to adopt and distribute to fire districts and territories. They do not have to. They could. The third one is nonmunicipal. So they, again, the county could adopt 0.2% to cut a lit check to townships, libraries, things of the nonmunicipal buckets. The next one is any municipality under 3,500. Again, they are under the county's jurisdiction, where the county would have to, they would have to petition the county, and the county would have to adopt that lit rate for them. And then the last one, again, is the only one not under the county. It would be the municipality, which would be up to the city council. Currently, there is no data from the Department of Revenue that houses data showing every adjusted gross income for the city of Peru. So when, so when county council, if they choose to adopt that 1.2% local income tax rate, that would be 1.2% on only residents who live in Peru. So if you live in Miami County, you're not subject to Peru's 1.2% local income tax. So currently, the Department of Revenue is creating a huge database for the entire state to determine every single adjusted gross income in Peru, to basically do the math of if that 1.2% was adopted, what would that amount to in local income tax dollars? Right now, we're working on very high-level assumptions that we will share with the mayor and council and Andrea as we finalize the first draft of the five-year plan of, based on just median household income census data. And if the city did adopt the 1.2%, what that would look like? Would it even get you to the $6 million or would it not? If not, that is going to be a huge hurdle for the city to navigate when that change comes into effect in 2028, as well as reviewing what budgets are affected, what cuts, if have to, need to be made to account for that change in revenue. Again, we'll have more data soon in the coming month for that. But I would expect a large change in 2028.
So right now, the lit is really set by the county.
Yes.
And then, like you said, based upon the city's assessed value, that's what share they get of that lit.
Yes.
So down the road, can the city have its own lit?
Yes, and that's what...
At one point, maximum. But so right now...
But the city won't, wouldn't get anything from the county. Maybe the fire territory would get a very small portion from the county if the county adopted that second bucket. But the city's general fund, if the city took no action in '28 to adopt that 1.2%, the city would get $0 in local income tax.
And, but the county, is there a limitation on what their lit can be? In other words, you know, are they going to have some, like, the same percentage amount of lit? Will they be...
Theirs will change, too.
Theirs will change.
Yeah, so they will be, the big one that the county will get is the first one, also the 1.2% that they will have to adopt. And they will deposit it into their county general fund. The interesting thing, though, if you add up all the max rates for the, for each of the five buckets, they exceed the 2.9% max combined rate. So the county, the rate that a taxpayer can pay in lit cannot exceed that 2.9%. So let's say you live in Peru, right, in the city. Let's say the city adopts the 1.2%. And let's say the county wanted to adopt all the other four buckets, right? Well, they couldn't. One of those buckets would have to be a little bit less than the maximum rate because they exceed the 2.9%. So in that case, because they're all overlapping, right? You, you live in Peru, you live in the county. Maybe you live in that fire protection district and the, in the nonmunicipal district. If all of those exceed 2.9%, someone in that bucket, whether it's the county, the city, the township, someone takes a little bit less of the pie, if that makes sense. So just a little bit interesting how they wrote Senate Bill One in regards to that, why they would set all of the max rates higher than what the max combined rate could be. But in, to some extent, it'll take some discussions with the county. I mean, you know, for example, if you're a town below 3,500 population, they're going to be going to the county anyways, begging for them to adopt that lit rate. Otherwise, their lit will completely go away. So as we get closer to this 2028 change, there's going to be, have to be conversations with the county. But at the end of the day, Peru council can adopt the 1.2% only for the taxpayers living in Peru.
And I'm asking that question because it's going to be important. If our, if our revenue from our property taxes go down...
Yes.
Then where else are we going to be getting, you know, revenue to offset that? The lit, well, we don't know.
Yeah.
Now there's a cap on the lit.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and again, we are working really hard to come up with firm numbers for all of these impacts. The property tax one, because we're, we literally are going parcel by parcel for every county, to really determine what are the impacts of these credits? Because they're applied in deductions, because they're applied parcel by parcel and depending on the parcel type. That'll take a few more months. But the lit, we should have something here pretty soon to determine. Again, I think this just highlights now, you know, every budget year '26 and especially '27 should really be precise that way. In 2028, that impact is at least a little bit easier to navigate rather than, you know, doing things, maybe business as usual as past years up to '28, and then all of a sudden having this shortfall in revenue, if that's what the numbers amount to. So it is big changes. But again, like I said at the beginning, this is, you know, the 2008 all over again, just probably at a little bit higher impact. Yes?
So I actually have a couple of questions because if we're being honest, it has a massive effect on my budget. Roughly a third of my budget currently comes from the lit.
Yeah.
So I understand, obviously, looking at the numbers, that they don't add up to 2.9%. So does that effectively put us in a race, so to speak, with getting that passed if the council were to choose to do that? To shore up funding? How's that proposed?
That's a good question and a question that has been asked many times. And unfortunately, we are not attorneys, but we do have attorney friends, I would say, who is, is trying to, as best they can, interpret the language that this is written. And the initial answer to that is yes, it will be a race. To, you know, every January 1st, is council holding a special meeting to adopt those lit rates? Because it has to be done annually, is the thing.
That was my other question. I think it's kind of interesting, first actually that I've heard, that it's going to have to be passed by city council every year.
Every year. It will have to be.
Could that be beginning in 2028 or 2027?
In, it would be January 1, '28. That would have to be the first action taken. Or no, it would be, because lit is a year in arrears. It'd be January 1st, '27. That action would be taken. So those would be the lit rates in '27. And then lit is received a year late as it's collected. So the revenues then would come in, in '28 as a result of the new policy.
So totally not related to me and the department that I work for, but currently under the, under the lit system, I think you mentioned that somewhere around $3 million of that $6 million that comes in goes to economic development. I don't see anything about economic development in this. So what then starts fueling our economic development funding? Or is there any answer to that at this point?
In terms of replacement?
Right.
Revenue that Senate Bill One...
Do we effectively have currently $3 billion annually, on average, coming in through lit that effectively funds and fuels our economic development?
Mm-hmm.
That eliminates it.
Yeah.
So there's no replacement for it currently?
No.
Well, and that's where the city will have to determine, are we going to have slower growth then and not, and reduce the amount towards economic development, you know, to run our other services?
Yeah, and I mean, the Economic Development Fund has and is projected to fund a lot of those important capital outlays. And typically, you know, when I talk about budget cuts, I know, I'm sure that's, you know, scares people. But typically, the first thing you cut is nonessential capital. You know, maybe building that new park that the whole community wants that, that, there's no money. You know, I think every community that I work with, the last thing they would want to do is, you know, cut personnel. But there are some communities, you know, planning for the worst in that sense. But that's why, you know, those capital budgets are super important. A lot of that edit fund is funding capital. So if that goes away, you know, I think it's going to be more important to prioritize those capital budgets. To say, because whatever income tax that the 1.2% can replace, you know, likely will have to replace the police, the public safety lit. Those are services you can't really, you can't cut. Whereas the new playground or splash pad that you really want to build, unfortunately, no one wants to cut that because you don't want to cut those, or quality-of-life projects. But that's usually what's first to go.
Now, how does the, I know the state wants to get rid of all the trustees. That's in the works. So how's that? There's a lot of fire money comes from the trustees.
Yeah.
So they're going to have to do something that accountable for that, right?
You would think. I mean, there is at least one other legislative session until 2028. So we could be surprised and they completely change this until, but we don't know. But what's passed right now, unless they meet again and change it and change how that affects, this is it. So this is kind of what we're planning with for now. Yeah. Any other questions on any of this or Senate Bill One?
I have a question. We haven't really touched on this topic. But so I know in the future, we're going to lose, I believe, some of the homestead credits. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, so that'll kind of go into what I had said about... Let me pull open my, what that is.
Yeah, they're going to be phased out.
Yes, and I don't know if I could plug that in just to show this. I have a slide that I could show you all of what that looks like. Maybe, do I have to like drag it? Oh, there, yeah, I do. See if I can zoom in. Oops, too much. So this is the phasing of those residential credits that we had talked about, the changes. So currently, which we're all aware of as taxpayers, is the standard deduction, which is the first line. You can see that phases out completely by 2031. And then comes in the supplemental homestead deduction, which phases up through 2031 and completely replaces that standard deduction credit, as well as the supplemental homestead credit, which is an additional credit on the tax bills of lesser of $300 or 10% of their net property tax bill. So I would just, you know, planning-wise, an extra $300. But, you know, if you kind of go back to that credit, or circuit breaker example that I had up and the math had already amounted to a short of $300 in circuit breaker, you've got these new credits just simply adding on top of that per taxpayer. So that's where we're going through parcel by parcel for each county and really coming up with, you know, for each individual parcel, what do all three of these mean? And then, of course, you've got your additional credits for 65 and over disabled homeowner and disabled veteran, which did not exist at all before. You can see here that those didn't exist. So, you know, if you're, if you're 65 and over and you're a disabled veteran, that's an additional $400 credit, which is great for those taxpayers, truly. You know, especially your taxpayers who are maybe on a fixed income or something. It's not great for the city having to understand these impacts and what they do to spending and budget. Because I think the city's main goal over everything is to continue to provide service as well to residents. You know, and when you cut your revenues, that often makes it harder to do. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And then I had another question because I find this kind of fascinating. The city council will have to adopt city tax. Okay, so...
Okay, so what's the actual process? Are we gonna determine the rates? I mean, what about property, uh, property owners? You know, do they have a voice in this? Or so, I know we're the fiscal body, the city council. So do we sit down, you know, among ourselves and determine the tax rate which we will?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, as your financial advisor will likely provide you the data to kind of guide. Unfortunately, I was working with another community and things like this get very political. They can turn very political and, you know, they already said it's an election year, that year for the council, and they will not, they are planning to not adopt a lit rate. So they are kind of just, we're gonna lose the revenue and see where it gets us. It's not really something we would recommend, but this particular community is in Lake County, so they, they're, they're a little bit different. They, they get pretty, pretty high growth through, like, things like building permits because they're just kind of exploding. So they may be able to afford that, but, I mean, yeah, I don't know, again, legally, the process, what that will look like. I imagine it will come with some sort of public hearing on those rates needed to where you would invite the community. As a council, you'll have to make those decisions to say, we're gonna adopt the max that generates this amount of dollars, or we're gonna adopt half because we don't wanna do that to our residents. I mean, we will provide you all that financial data and provide you suggestions, but ultimately, whatever rate that council adopts will be reviewed and adopt every single year.
Do you have any idea what the $6 million, say, we, we get right now, the lit from the county, what that comes out to in terms of, you know, a, a, a lit rate for the city?
Um, do we have that now?
Just to be...
Okay. You want them?
That's what I'm afraid of, so...
I lost my mouse, hang on.
Yeah, I'm just asking, just as a point of reference, what, right now, what does that amount would represent in terms of the lit rate for the city?
Yep, I'm pulling it open. Maybe?
If it represents 2.5%, that's not good.
Yeah. This is a quick, these are just numbers on the screen that we did before, just kind of for talking points. Again, this is based on mean income and number of households that we're getting from the US Census, so it very likely is not perfect. This row right here, this is the total local income tax. That sums to just over $6 million. When we divide that $6 million, divide it by the estimated AGI, which is this number right here, the 204 million, and that's calculated by the number of households and the mean income, that does result in an almost 3% rate.
Yeah, the stark difference here is that right now, Peru, the local income tax that Peru is getting is based on the county's adjusted gross income. And since Peru is the second-largest taxing district in the county, they get a larger piece, they get a larger piece of the pie. So when you take that amount that you're getting currently and, and adjust it to reflect Peru, the city of Peru's adjusted gross income, you're gonna see a decrease. So we're confident that Peru is going to see a decrease. It's just determining how much of the decrease is.
Because the data from the Department of Revenue, that will say, will list out every single adjusted gross income inside the city of Peru is still being created. Once we have that, we would have those solid numbers. And of course, that changes every year, but when we're just using the census mean, yeah, we're coming up with quite a high lit rate. So the math might not be perfect, but I think it's probably safe to say the city would see some sort of decrease.
Which makes me wonder, why would most cities not go with the 1.2, you know?
I agree. And I think most will. I think there will be those outliers, like I had mentioned, who, you know, can replace their, their revenue from other means. That's great. And, I mean, they always would have that ability in the future. You know, if they didn't do it in '28, they could maybe do it in 2030, but I, I'm, I'm sure most cities will. Because especially your large metropolitan cities, how do you provide services without, without it, you know? Any other questions?
I wanted to just add, because when the city council starts adopting the city tax, is that straight across the board for Indiana? Are there different counties?
The...
Was it just regional or local?
The max, you mean? Or what Peru?
No, the city council will have to adopt city tax after 2028.
Yes.
But is that straight across the board for the entire state of Indiana? All the counties?
Yeah, oh, will they have to do it? Yes. Yes.
And it's for pop- for cities with populations over 3,500.
The max is, is the same across the county, but you'll likely see different rates adopted. I mean, I would assume most are 1.2%, but you might see some adopting half or none or, or somewhere in between. You know, some counties, some communities could do the math and determine that that, you know, 2.99% right now is really amounting to only 1% for them, and they may say that's what we're gonna adopt, is just to replace. I would say most will probably adopt the max, though. Any other questions? Do you wanna add anything, Andrea, that would help you as, as you're getting the Form 1s back or, or anything else that you want us to mention? Andrea quits, everyone.
Just as, the Form 1s that I got, I gave you the updated. Like I said to a lot of you, that this is just step one. And with this information, if you could go back and maybe look through your budget and see if there's areas that you can trim some, may not be this year, but going forward, that we can do?
Yeah, I think when we, we met with the departments about capital, you know, how you had these projects maybe distributing some, something over a number of years so that you, you know, you just didn't say, well, I'm gonna budget $500,000 for this project in three years. You know, let's, let's do 150, 150, 100, or something to that effect. But, you know, just try to be more realistic and not just do across-the-board increases and, and that sort of thing, you know? Put some thought into it, I guess, but...
Also, just looking at the stark detail, if in the last, if in '22 and '23 you had $10,000 spent in an account in '24, or you saw it jump to '25, make sure there's no non-recurring items in there before just adopting the 25.
You know, for some of us, we, you know, you're saying, well, we're getting down in the weeds on the department heads, you know? But it gives you an idea of what's coming and, you know, what the city's going to have to be dealing with here over the next few years with the changes of, of SB 1, the impact that has. And as you said, maybe in two years, you know, when the next time we have, you know, budget session, things will change. But right now, this is what's on the horizon, so you just have to, at least everybody is aware of that. And like I said, this is very helpful, and maybe we can get a copy of this and distribute it out so we can refer back to it because there was some helpful information.
Absolutely. We will send it to Andrea and she can distribute it. All right?
Does any of the departments have questions and words to follow? Reviewing the Form 1s that we have?
No, I guess, next step then is, is we'll be getting with department, or you and the mayor, but I assume there'll be some, you know, I know that there's, council wants to do more involvement in those budget meetings this year, just to get a, a better idea, a better feel for what is happening and, you know, with the departments. So you'll see some council folks sitting in on some of those budget meetings, but we're glad we're getting started on it because, you know, this, you know, it's, it's gonna get crazy.
Do they have part board, the part board movement?
Do they?
They, they just suggest that, I believe. Bob and Mike.
What's that?
Having the, the part board come in for the budget? They don't...
They just suggest...
They don't have them put into your budget, right? I mean, once we get, once we work through it, we can give you copies and you can review it at the part board, get their blessing.
All right. Well, you know where to find us if questions arise. If you, if you don't know where to find us, Andrea knows where to find us. So I know you all know how to find Andrea. So let us know if there's any additional questions, but we will keep working on our, essentially, revenue estimates. And then, as you all are working on your '26 budgets, we'll kind of pull everything together and work with council and the mayor and Andrea to see where things are, are headed for everyone. So any questions, let us know.
I'd like to propose, I, I know we have four of our seven council members here. I can use me for the other department heads at this point, but at least in anything that I've submitted in Form 1, I clearly hope you have a conversation as we move forward in the budgeting process. But in the interim, if anybody has any questions about anything that I put in my Form 1, there are, there are additions, there are subtractions, there are both. So feel free to reach out, have a conversation. Happy to try to explain anything that I've put in there.
You know, I, I would say the same thing as well, because in the past, I've turned in Form 1s and then I get a budget back and completely different than what I put in there. And I had, and I've had no input whatsoever on a lot of it in the past, so...
Yeah, in the past, we've had like three year meetings and then a couple of years, few years back, we had one meeting and that was it. We didn't get a seat nothing back. It was, I think it would take the council that night, maybe, a few years ago or something.
Yeah, last, of course, last year was my first year, but it, it was an odd, you know, situation, but I would like to see if there are any changes that we sit down with the department heads and go over what those, why we're, why those changes are in, and maybe we, you could say, oh, well, you know, if you're going to, you know, cut that, I'd rather you do this category or whatever, you know? So I'm sure, you know, we'll, we'll have a couple of different meetings before we get to that point.
I'd say the same thing. If, if you guys got any questions on mine, get ahold of Matt. Matt, you can get ahold of me. We all have phones. Feel free to call us. It's good.
Thank you for your time.
You guys got...
Thank you guys.